Agenda is approved. Also need a motion to approve the minutes. If y'all had a chance to look them over, if there's no changes or amendments, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm going to receive and adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any disapprove? Minutes are accepted. All right, unfinished business, and Mr. Costin, I know that Shane is not able to make it here, he's had a car issue.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, the, Mr. Hawkins is the maintenance supervisor at the LRA, reached out to us, and he's about 25 minutes away with a flat tire. So, he sent us a picture and everything. So, I told him that we got it, we'll carry it, but I have no unfinished business on the agenda.
Okay. All right, keep it up with the agenda. I'd like to go on and move to new business for the surplus property. Mr. Costin, you have the floor, sir.
All righty. You have before you a rather group listing from Securus. They are a recycling firm that has inventoried as the staff and provided a price quote on the removal and recycling of these products. In your board packet, you'll see a picture that is somewhat evidentiary of just piles of stuff stored at the LRA property. These are old computers, three-inch floppy disk, five-inch floppy disk apparatus. This is 1980s, 1990s stuff. I have it on both agendas because some of the material belonged to the LRA and was used by, at the LRA. Some of the material was used by and belongs to the county, but there's no definitive list of where it came from. So, I'm kind of throwing the broad brush in asking both bodies this evening to declare all this property surplus.
You need that in the form of a motion?
It would be helpful, yes, sir.
I move to declare the equipment presented surplus and direct county and LRA staff to dispose of it in an appropriate manner.
We have a motion, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, any opposed? Motion pass. Get rid of it.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other new business?
No new business, yes, sir.
Okay, so the staff report Mr. Hawkins had was, well, obviously not going to get that, he did not have a copy of that for you, or was there any items that we have?
There's a copy in the packet, and I'll just run through them real quick. The water heaters for the lodge buildings, that money's been approved for this, and he'd like to move forward with the contractor, unless there's any objections. He's working on getting electrical price for the food trucks. This is to provide some electrical service where the food trucks are parking. He's working on moving his office to the old planning office at the Officers Club, keep a better eye on top of that. We have a new power line class that's started, so there are students in building 443. The work crew has done some painting, now these are the work crews that we get from the Department of Corrections, and he really likes these fellows. He's kind of found some that have some real skill sets, and he's using those, bringing those back with regularity. Now, the cameras, these have been installed cameras for the south side of Virginia Community College, the female housing building, building 408. It was pointed out that there's actually some security cameras around the building where the men are housed, but not the ladies. So, to try to keep things equal and provide a little bit higher sense of protection there, those cameras have been installed. And again, as you just saw, we're working on recycling program for old office equipment. I'd be happy to take any questions. You have any, answer them to the best of my ability.
Board members, y'all have any questions for Mr. Costin? All right, also, as far as the water heater go, is the, we confident the procurement procedure was met?
Yes, sir.
All right, you need a motion to approve that?
For the record, let's go ahead and get one.
All right. Can we have a motion to approve the contractor's bid to install the water heaters at the LRA properties?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you have it, Mr. Costin.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anything under the information items to bring forward?
Just what you have before you, the lease actions and the club income.
Okay. Any discussion on that from any board members?
No.
I'm sorry, authority members. Okay. All right, well, you have anything else, Mr. Costin?
No, sir.
All right.
Well, I do have one other, I, we do have, we're passing over a closed meeting this evening because we have a number of real estate issues that need to be addressed, and I was hoping that the authority could set an evening for a special meeting to go into closed session and discuss a number of real estate issues.
Board members, could y'all look, I mean, authority members, could y'all look at your calendar, see what day, do we want to try to do that in conjunction with a work session, the first hour of a work session, and then roll out of the authority into a scheduled work session?
On the board of supervisors' side, you all have indicated the desire to have a work session on the CIP.
Mm-hmm.
In July, if you wanted to go an hour earlier, that would be five o'clock.
What date is it?
That's the 6th or the 13th?
The 13th.
Okay. July 13th?
July 13th.
Can y'all make it at five? Is that putting anybody in the bind as far as work?
Me, but I probably can. I can, I can, yeah, I can work it out.
I'll call and tell them you need to get out of school.
Okay, you send me a note.
Yes. All right, does that work for everybody then? 13th at five, LRA.
Let's see.
And then, once that's concluded, we can do the work session for the CIP for the board. All right. Does that take care of that, Mr. Costin?
Yes, sir, it does. Thank you.
All right. Authority members, y'all have anything else? entertain a motion adjourned?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting adjourned. We will start back at our regular board meeting at seven o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Norwood County Board of Supervisors for June 15th. Tonight, we have Pastor Warren in attendance with us tonight. Pastor Warren, if you don't mind, would you please join us, sir, and give the invocation for tonight? Pastor Warren, if you don't mind, would you please join us, sir, and give the invocation for tonight? Thank you for joining us tonight, we greatly appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for allowing me to come and pray. Would you bow with me briefly? Gracious Father, as we come before you today, humble servants, seeking your divine presence and guidance, as we gather today in this chamber of governance. As a pastor, I stand to lift up our collective voices in prayer, asking for your blessings upon this, the esteemed members of the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors. In this diverse assembly, we acknowledge the uniqueness, calling, and responsibility you have given each individual present. We recognize that you have called them to serve this county with compassion, wisdom, and humility. Grant them the strength and the carriage to carry on their duties faithfully and mindfully, and let them always remember that they represent your people, the people of Nottoway County. In Jesus's name, amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor Warren, great words. Appreciate you coming forward with those words. Good things to live by. Let's give honor to our country, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Following the agenda, I am the vice chair, and at this point, I am going to pass the gavel to Administrator Costin. The board needs to elect a new chairman to serve out the unexpired term of Mr. Steve Bowen. Mr. Costin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Supervisor Rourke, thank you. The floor is now open for nominations for the position of Chair of the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors for the remainder of the calendar year 2023.
Mr. Costin, I move to nominate current Vice Chair John Rourke to fill the chair position for the remainder of the calendar year 2023.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any other nominations?
Move that we close the nomination.
We have a motion to close nominations, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to close nominations and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Then with that, we'll now take up the matter of the nomination of Supervisor Rourke as Chairman for the remainder of 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Mr. Chairman, the gavel is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, I graciously accept this and appreciate y'all's allowing me to do this, and I do not intend to let you down. I appreciate it. At this time, I need a motion to open the floor to select a vice chair for the remainder of 2023.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for the Vice Chairman for the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors for the remainder of 2023. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Helen Simmons as Vice Chair.
Okay, any other nomination? All right, need a motion to close nominations?
So move.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly motioned, a second to close nominations, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now to the motion on the floor for to allow Supervisor Shelkton, I'm sorry, Supervisor Simmons to fulfill the Vice Chairman's role for 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved, congratulations, Ms. Vice Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am, all right, rolling along. Board members, I need a motion to approve the agenda unless we have any amendments or anything.
No amendments, the same as well.
Chair members, any amendments?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Also, next, we have the approval of the minutes for March 9th, 2023, and May 23rd of 2023.
I move that we receive and adopt.
We have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objected? All right, minutes for March 9th and May 23rd is approved. Okay, moving on to delegations from the public. All right. Mr. Sonny Abbott.
Mr. Chairman, remaining members of the board.
Good evening.
Mr. Costin, fellow citizens. A while back, the Courier Records editor had some fun exchanging local names with actors in a make-believe movie. My Nottoway Book of Mysteries isn't as funny. We're at chapter four with two planned chapters at year end. What other unknown actions will pop up in between now and December? Now, I wrote these words Monday. Last night, I think we added another chapter. Now, I recognize that the composition of the board has changed. I will miss my friend, Mr. Bowen, and hope that what was stated or started won't be adversely impacted by his departure. Although I feel the loss of Ms. Tomer and Mr. Bowen has started a negative slide, and we can see significant deterioration. How will the citizens frame the lack of actions by the county administrator and possibly the board? On June 1st, a public hearing was held on the proposed budget for the 2324 fiscal year. From that meeting until now, I've heard nothing. I have reviewed what will be undertaken this evening and know exactly why. Nothing, absolutely nothing, was changed from the original proposed budget presentation. Now, will you help me understand why nothing anyone brought before this board that evening was worthy to be considered significant enough to force a change to the original proposal? Not one single item. Was the Department of Education's email not believable? Did this board ask the county administrator to verify the claim, or did he do it on his own? The lack of actions provides adequate evidence that the response would be no. Can anyone point to the line item that holds the $200,000 Mr. Costin gave his word would be available to help with the library restoration in Crew? Mr. Costin's word was the subject of discussion at the Monday, June 12th Crew Town Council meeting. Can anyone explain why the loss of Ms. Tomer is considered part of the reasons the proposed budget must be appropriated without a single change? Momentarily, I'll cover the frantic rush to secure a replacement candidate for the Nottoway Finance Officer. Now, you all know it's been 28 days since Ms. Tomer presented her letter of resignation with a departure date of May 31st. Why is it taking so long to replace a position, rumor has it, that some in the administration and board thought would be easily filled? Or could it be that the void created by her departure is just an excellent way to hide the inexcusable lack of job performance? On one other subject. Is the objective of the comprehensive plan to provide a clear and transparent understanding of what the guide is proposing? A single sentence change, once called that by the former board member, is more like a couple of pages of data. Whenever that data is boiled down, it should require a second public hearing. And finally, why are citizens being treated with such disdain? The lack of citizen consideration can simply be stated as disgraceful. This collective failure represents the inability to meet even the lowest of any performance standard. Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Abbott, if you would, please. Is any members, Mr. Costin, y'all have any questions for Mr. Abbott? Any clarification that we need?
I can address something later.
Okay. All right. Mr. Abbott, to your point about the comp plan, I believe at our last board meeting, we were having some discussion about going to another public hearing. I know the board had some discussion about that because there was a lot of yellow in that book. And of course, some changes have been made, you know, with a resignation, so that will be brought back forth, and I believe we're going to get an update on that comp plan tonight from Mr. Sodi, as I was told earlier.
That'd be great, and I appreciate that because I brought a copy of the current budget to give anyone sitting up there the chance to show me where that $200,000 happens to be located.
And you're talking about the $200,000?
The $200,000 that Mr. Costin alleged to give his word to the town of Crew to help the restoration of the library.
That was coming from opera funds.
If that's in the current budget, someone can point that out to me, too, because it was never brought up.
Okay.
Never brought up, but thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, I am good at butchering names, so y'all hang on, I'm gonna butcher somebody's name here for tonight. Okay, so if I get it wrong, please don't take offense to it, I believe this, is this Zanis Tally? Okay. Did I pronounce that right, was there any word?
If you did, your French is excellent.
Well, thank you, sir, thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Zanis Tally, I'm with the law firm Whiteford Taylor &amp; Preston in Richmond. I'm here this evening representing the town of Burkeville, Virginia. Joining me is the Mayor of Burkeville, Mayor Welch, and two members of the Town Council. We're here this evening to speak to the matter of a boundary line adjustment agreement between Nottoway County and Burkeville. I know this is an issue this body has considered twice before. First, nearly 27 years ago to the day in 1995, and then again, just a few years ago. That being the case, and with your indulgence, I'll set aside the broad history that brings us here today and turn to my remarks. Let me contextualize what I'd like to say tonight with two words, fairness and equity. On that second most recent occasion where this body considered this matter, a member of this body remarked to the effect that whatever the county decided in how to address the boundaries among the county and its towns, it had to be fair, and that its result would not put any of the towns in a worse position. Or to put it differently, that it would not be inequitable. But Burkeville has proposed, and which we're happy to discuss further should you all like under the new business matter, is to expand its boundaries so to accommodate responsible growth, developmental growth, economic growth, and physical growth, and to sustain the good, decent, and honorable people that make up the town of Burkeville and that will make it up in the future. The proposal as it stands tonight, expanding the town's nearly one square mile footprint, and I will note that that's the smallest of the three towns, will ensure that Burkeville will have the very thing which defines it, possibility. Possibility to continue supporting not only Burkeville, but the greater Nottoway community as a whole, and do so with the partnership that our presence here this evening, we hope, demonstrates. Burkeville is poised for incredible growth if this body provides it with just the possibility. Now, I'd like to speak briefly concerning the other boundary line adjustment request that has been made to this body from the town of Crew. Let me start by saying this. While the proposed adjustments provided from Burkeville and from Crew cover similar land, some kind of adjustment to both towns can be both fair and equitable. But on the other side, what it also can be is it can lead to the unincorporation of Burkeville as a town. As this body knows, Burkeville derives significant monetary benefit from Nottoway Correctional Center's mailing address, being serviced by the U.S. Post Office right off Second Street down in Burkeville, and from providing EMS service to the other state facilities just north of the correctional center. Should this body agree to Crew's proposed adjustment this evening, the adjustment that will bring all three state facilities within Crew, that very post office may very well shut down. And that, along with preventing any further expansion to the east along 460 and 360, which one might consider to be the major developable corridor there, that all could very well foreclose Burkeville's ability to remain the strong and proud community that it is. In short, and with all due respect to Crew and its representatives, agreeing tonight to their proposal will neither be fair nor will it be equitable. And it will retreat from the position made just a few years ago that whatever is done, Nottoway will not place any of its towns in a worse position, even further. Burkeville's voice is not entirely represented here tonight, as you all know. We have a vacancy on this board, an open seat, the very seat of the district which includes Burkeville. A decision tonight agreeing to Crew's adjustment, that isn't fair. That is inequitable. We submit to this board that Burkeville's proposal does justice to fairness and equity, that it stays true to ensuring that no town is worse off from the decision to agree with this proposal, and it demonstrates the investment that Nottoway can make, not just in the town, but in the greater Nottoway community as a whole. Let me close with this. We ask this body to consider our proposal and either begin the necessary steps to complete this request, or alternatively defer consideration of either proposal for the purpose of allowing all the stakeholders to come to the table and to finally crunch out a solution that will serve the interests of each locality. Ladies and gentlemen, this can be done. Mr. Chairman, members, thank you.
All right, Mr. Tally, if you don't mind, if you could hold up for one second. I know we've got this on the agenda later on, but does anybody have any current questions right now? I didn't know if, were you exiting or were you staying?
No, sir.
To get to new business?
Happy to be here.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then we may have some further discussion for you a little bit later on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Mason. You break it, you buy it. How you doing, sir?
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Costin. I'm gonna be much like you guys and have some old business and some new business, mainly to clear up some misconceptions for the citizens of the county that have not heard. I mainly just wanted to clear up some misconceptions and misunderstandings that the citizens may have. You guys have heard some of this, and the Planning Commission has heard some of this, but the citizens haven't, and I feel as though it's important that the citizens understand and hear it as well. And this is obviously, because nothing else comes from me, is all around the industrial solar issue. The first point is, your electric rate will not go down. Number two, your tax rate will not be reduced. I've lived this personally, there are other members in the county that have lived it with other counties as well. Neither of those will happen. You will incur approximately a 5.8% reduction in your property value if we're anything like North Carolina, which is the closest state that's been studied. Now, that's if you live adjacent to one of these industrial solar sites or in the immediate vicinity of that. And it's comparing it to comparables that are not near those sites. Now, as for the site, only site that is in consideration, I realize that there's no application at this point, but there is a site that's in consideration. It is the most ecologically damning, damaging site in the county in terms of the ecological core and as well as the forest conservation model. There's also this issue that I brought up based on the Natural Resources Conservation Services map, which shows that this particular site is the worst site in the entire county as far as erosion potential goes. And that is something that's gonna haunt us with this thing being right on the river. The facts are there. It's a K factor. The K factor is maxed out at the worst. It could not be worse. This site sits right on top of the plantation pipeline, as I've said before, carrying diesel fuel, jet fuel, gasoline. And they've got a battery storage facility proposed that will sit right on top of that pipeline. And I can't imagine what the fire would be like. Not one single landowner in Nottaway County, in Virginia, or even the United States stands to benefit from the land sale at this site. Not one person. Moving on to new business, on Tuesday night, the kilowatt production allowance cap was removed by the Planning Commission. I'm sure this will be discussed by Mr. Zodi. By default, this removes the cap on the acreage allowed. My view, that just opens it up for us to be exactly like Mecklenburg and Charlotte County, unless we focus on limiting the acreage in the ordinance. Which could easily get out of hand. If I recall, the board seemed to be somewhat in agreement with the Rockingham ordinance. It's a palatable ordinance if you have to agree to solar at all. I would encourage you to keep that ordinance close at hand and refer to it. I don't know exactly what the status is of the existing Nottaway ordinance, but it was not passed. I'm not sure exactly where that stands. I'll be honest with you. I don't know where that stands. But I do know that there was a point in time just a few months ago where reference was made to the fact of simply changing Rockingham to Nottaway in the ordinance.
Mr. Mason, I'm sorry. The board has a time limit, and we're exceeding that now.
I was at the end. That was it anyway. Good thing I didn't say I was gonna give you back some time.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your understanding. But also, does the board members have any questions for Mr. Mason? Clarification or anything? All right. So, Mr. Mason, as you alluded to, I spoke with Mr. Zodi a little bit earlier, and he is bringing that kilowatt discussion to our attention tonight in his report. So, please feel free to hang around.
Oh, I will.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your due diligence and what you've been presenting at these meetings. It means a lot to a lot of people. Thank you, sir. Ms. Sheila Mason? Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Good.
All right, I'm gonna be short and sweet because y'all know I get a little passionate about this solar stuff, and I don't like it. I want y'all to look at this, okay? Go on Facebook, Stop Solar Farms, Amanda Widener at Pennsylvania County of Supervisors, where they put an end to big solar. It was the meeting on the 21st of March, 2023. That's on Facebook. She's a very passionate, eloquent speaker. And if you replace her Pennsylvania County comments with Nottaway County comments, I think it would reflect many of what the citizens believe now. If you can't get Facebook, we have YouTube, okay? Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting at the mark of 1:31. Again, 3:21, 2023. She addresses, for one thing, the fact that big solar will only help big landowners because they're the ones that have the property to put big solar on and make big money. They're talking about generational wealth. Well, generational wealth only goes towards the wealthy that have the land to put it on. What about the poor Nottaway residents? What about the people with one acre, two acres? They're gonna have to sit there and look at the solar fields in front of their house, and they have no, no chance of making wealth from their sale of their house or working up out of poverty because they have no chance to sell a property that's facing solar or surrounded on three sides by solar, which part of the properties that are on the Dickinson site would be surrounded on three sides. So it's not about green, it's about money. And I hope y'all go to these sites, you listen to that woman, because she says it's straight out about how you should look at this. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mason, could I get one point of clarification for me, please? And by the way, thank you, as always, for coming forward. Just for folks at home, is that 1 minute 31 seconds or 1 hour 31 minutes?
I think it's, I'm not sure. 1:31. I'm not sure because I watched it a long time ago, but it was a long time.
It should be easy to figure out.
So it should be Amanda Widener. She's one of the last speakers in front of the Board of Supervisors at that meeting. She is amazing.
Board members, did y'all have any questions or anything for Ms. Mason?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mason.
Thank you.
Okay. Rose Wooton. Hey, coach. Take your time.
But I don't have to say a whole lot because everybody has addressed what I wanted to say. Chairman, board members, and Mr. Costin, I'm concerned about the comprehensive plan and what's been going on the last.
She can't hear you.
We're gonna get a big microphone one of these days.
I have a gym voice, so just forget the mic. I'm concerned about the comp plan and what's been going on the last couple of months with the comp plan. In May, the Planning Commission spent a considerable amount of time making sure the language for a new statement in the comp plan was correct, and they voted and approved that statement, and the wording of the new language was put in, okay? Then former supervisor Steve Bowen was the one who initiated this conversation. And the statement was approved, and they asked a representative to put in that language into this comp plan, and it has been. At the firing meeting that you had, you referenced what I was getting ready to talk about, was that you didn't want to do the budget and the comprehensive plan at the same meeting, and that also it might need another public hearing for the public to speak out on, which I'm in agreement of. And it was needed for, when you talked about that, you said after the discussion, the board decided that a public hearing would be best, and that when the comp plan was ready, they would determine a date for the public hearing. That was my understanding. So then Tuesday, I go to the Planning Commission, which I've been going through the last year just through your meetings, I've learned so much, that they wanted to change that wording. So there was some discussion on it. The wording was, one statement was completely crossed out. The wording on another statement on page 21 was changed. I don't know why that happened, but I think that it needs to be looked at when you have a chance to look at the comprehensive plan and see the difference in the two of them and see what kind of impact that's gonna have on, you know, the solar that we're talking about in the county eventually, okay? So there also was discussion concerning the need for a public hearing in that meeting, but the Planning Commission decided that it was probably up to you to make that decision, that, you know, they didn't think it was, but it was gonna be leave it up to you. So my questions were, does the Board of Supervisors have a draft plan in hand? The revised one from Tuesday's meeting yet? If so, is there gonna be another public hearing possibly for that plan? And then, this is just me looking at the plan, because I have a whole, I've written all over the plan. Why not keep the previous language that was set forth in setting limits according to kilowatts? Then, it was a discussion, was talking about there are other creative ways that they could, you know, control acres, you know? Then do that in your solar ordinance, okay? So use that creative way when you're developing your solar ordinance. Keep the comp plan with that statement that you had in May, which helps us, okay? And then use your creative ways in your solar ordinances. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wooton. Board members, did anybody have any questions for Ms. Wooton? And Ms. Wooton, just so I clarify and make sure, so Greg may need to make a note or two. We have not, the board members have not gotten that draft yet. I guess they're redoing that, and we are a little bit short-staffed, but we're gonna make sure that, the staff is gonna make sure that we get that. And just me personally, yes, I favor going to a public hearing simply because there was a lot of changes in the language. And for Mr. Zodi, you wanna know basically the low kilowatt compared to low acreage? What's the difference as far as taking that language out of the comp plan? Is that correct? Is that accurate?
I think you need to have that language in there.
Okay.
Okay, I really do. I think you need to set the limits on the kilowatts that are used. And then, if you want to use creative ways to control acres or, you know, the amount of solar that's been being produced in the county, do that in your solar ordinance. Then it's gonna be stronger.
Okay. All right, we'll get some clarification for you, and I appreciate you coming forward, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Slugger Morset. Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to address a couple of things here. It's, one thing I wanted to discuss, first of all, these astronomical attorney fees that Nottaway is taking on. I'd just like to bring it to you folks' attention that the more chaos an attorney can cause, the more court cases he's got. So he's in a position to enhance his own check, if you get my drift on that. So I've been doing a little reviewing on it, and I got to thinking, I was raised a bricklayer and a furniture maker and carpenter and knew a little bit about that. And, you know, when you build, have a four-legged chair, you have to have all them even. But a three-legged chair don't have to be even legs on it. That's why they use them when they milk cows, because the land is different size when you're sitting on that milking stool, see? And the way this county is getting milked with attorney's fees, y'all need to buy your attorney a milking stool, exactly what he needs, see? So I was gonna bring this attention to you. It's very important to me about subdivisions and who approves them. Because if somebody's approving them, they aren't authorized to approve subdivisions, and that subdivision is illegal, and you can't transfer a deed on an illegal subdivision. I have here an eight-lot subdivision that Mr. Costin approved, right here. And I also have him on a recording here admitting to that he was unauthorized to sign it. So what I'd like to know is, is anybody here gonna go out and reach out to these realtors?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hold on, you can't stop me unless I've said something wrong.
Hold on, Mr. Morset. You are out of order, ma'am. There is a concern on the floor right now. Your time will be reestablished, okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Now, in the meantime, anytime an objection is raised, we will not have outbursts for anybody in the public. We're gonna make that clear right now. Officer, could you escort Ms. Yates out of the room, please?
Mr. Chairman, may I address this? Because I think it's critical to the process.
Mr. Morset, are you okay with him asking a question and then you resuming your time?
I would like to say, first of all, a little bit about the freedom of speech. I've been in the court with this in Chesterfield, know a whole lot about it. Board members can't address the public, so you said it exactly right, getting my permission. I just wanted to tell you that, and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead, Mr. Costin, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Morset, thank you. It's not a question. I want to clarify his statement. I signed that plat as the acting subdivision agent because we had no one else. Mr. Zodi had not been hired. That plat came before the Planning Commission in the Board of Supervisors. I probably had been recorded saying, "I can't authorize that plat," and I'll stand by that. I could not authorize that plat. That plat had to go before the Planning Commission, which it did, and the Board of Supervisors, which it did. Once they approved the plat, my signature executed and demonstrated that the plat had been approved in the proper process. So let's be clear. I individually, county administrator or acting subdivision agent, could not single-handedly approve, what is that, an eight-lot subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It's an eight-lot subdivision, which exceeds the minimum number. That's considered a major subdivision in Nottaway County. I could not approve it. Mr. Zodi couldn't approve it. No other subdivision agent could approve it. It had to be approved through a process. My signature represents that that process was completed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Morset.
See, this adds to my time, you know?
Yes, sir. You will get your full five minutes, sir. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say, you know, you would be right, except the board has to sign the plat or the Planning Commission. Virginia Code 15.2-2254 says only the Planning Commission, Board of Governing Body, or its duly authorized agent can approve subdivisions. Had, if Mr. Costin has been duly authorized by the board as a subdivision agent, not as a county administrator, you still had it open to the board to sign that. If they approved it, they signed it. If the Planning Commission approved it, they signed it. But someone unauthorized to sign a plat is not legal. That's what that statute is, and if you look it up. So I'm gonna leave with that. I don't want to cause any disturbance in this room. I respect you folks. And another thing for the record, I want you to know this. I didn't wish Mr. Bowen any harm at all when all of this come up. I didn't want nothing to happen to that man. Just wanted that on the record.
And Mr. Morset, I appreciate you coming forward with your concerns, sir. And what we need to do is get some clear clarification to your concerns. And the county has its attorneys. You have your attorneys as well. And we need to come to some sort of a conclusion on this matter. And I think that's what you want. I think that's what the county wants. And if I could ask you, just, what are you looking for, sir? What is the end game here, sir?
My end game is I've been working on this for 15 years.
Yes, sir.
And the subdivision ordinances were not legally approved.
Okay.
Therefore, I don't feel like we have legal subdivision ordinances. Just read them yourself. When they were approved, it's November the 20th, 2008, with one vote. They passed like 44 pages of subdivision ordinances. The General Assembly would like that. Each ordinance, I'll give you the code section. It's 15.2-1426. It tells you how you form ordinances there. And you have to, each ordinance has to have a title and section. But that could go on expanded. My end game here is to use my property. In 19, before 1995, you could do two acre lots without any road. The state road frontage requirement that we have in this ordinance in Nottaway stops all subdivisions because there is no one that can build a road to state specifications and sell five-acre lots for $35,000. And you can verify that, Mr. O'Rourke, by looking at the, just putting in real estate for sale in Nottaway County, pick out five-acre lots. The same five acres in Chesterfield is $160,000, and they got the same road requirements. And that's part of it. I'd like, love to get together with you guys and let's put. I'd like, love to get together with you guys, and let's put this thing together and help all the property owners in this county.
Okay. We're going, we're going to see how, how exponentially we can move towards that. I think I said that word absolutely wrong, but I thank you for what I meant.
Thank you very much.
So thank you, Mr. Morset, and I apologize. But board members and staff, if we could, the precedent here has been that we'll have conversations, ask if there are any questions afterwards. So if y'all have something, just make a note, and we'll, we'll talk with them after that. And that way, we, we may have, may have a different way of running into a problem like that again, because I don't like the appearance of silence in the, the public either, but we can't have outbursts from the public either while someone else is at the podium. Ms. Sue Yates, please.
I'll give you your special copy, Ted, so you can look at me when you talk.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Can I have your autograph?
All right, thank you.
Where does a citizen start? I guess as always, I will try the direct approach. It has not been a good week for Nottaway. I'm hoping that Mr. Costin will give me the courteousness of looking at me as I speak, and I appreciate that you're doing that right now. Let's start with the resignation of past Supervisor Bowen, who has illegitimately served on the Board of Supervisors for almost 16 years. After reviewing the pertinent documents, how could Mr. Bowen possibly claim that he did not know? After all, he signed a deed that showed was, that showed he was in Prince Edward County. Documents prove the Bowens intentionally subdividing their land in Prince Edward County. And who was involved in this scheme? I ask this board, what does this mean for Nottaway County? One could easily argue that one vote by Mr. Bowen could even be legal. I suppose that this issue will, will cost the taxpayers more legal fees. Sands Anderson will be salivating. How many votes did Mr. Bowen take that would have made a drastic direction change in this county during his four terms? Moving along, is it me, or does it appear our little county is going woke? Nottaway Bowling Alley, which, might I remind you, is owned by the taxpayers and hosting a drag queen event. I have spoken out against this via social media, and not surprisingly, have basically been called every name in the book. Arguing with me, this woke event is only open to adults over 21. I submit it is being held in a venue that is open to children. You can't take alcohol on a school property because there's children there, even if they're not in session. I am told this event will be held in the bar. It began with advertising on social media that a rainbow drink contest was part of the festivities, encouraging consumption of six alcoholic drinks with an award of a seventh on the house. After challenging this with a Blackstone Council member who is also making money from this event, this exposure to the county as the landlord was stricken from the event. I'm glad they did that. Does this board have any oversight of the bowling alley since the citizens are the owners, or is that another exposure we'll pay Sands Anderson to defend? Next, do we have a legal zoning administrator? Ted Costin knows this, and he has done nothing. In fact, to the best of my knowledge, we have never had a zoning administrator. So what does that mean for zoning in Nottaway? Are we simply breaking the law? What are you supervisors doing about this? I would not ask Ted Costin, because I'm not sure he has the expertise to know. Another one for the books. Last night, the Electoral Board voted unanimously to renew the current registrar's contract. Please let every, let me remind everyone that this is the same man who stood at this same podium and called the citizens of Nottaway fornicating racists. We all know what fornicating means. Have I been, I have been told that April Wright, a Republican board member, has had her business and her family threatened. I am left to wonder if the threats influenced her vote. I know what it feels like, in that I too have had threats made to me because I choose to speak out. The difference I would have recused myself on a vote as important as the registrar. I only have a couple more, so bear with me. We have solar breathing down our necks. A judge who, even though he was a citizen who stood by and watched this very complex rot, which, may I remind you, I brought to your attention four years ago. A judge who is exposing the negligence and now the superintendent, and now the superintendent of schools is asking for $12 million to build a new gym. The schools that she oversees barely passed state mandated testing by a mere 30%. She made public statements about a young man in middle school while denying he was sexually assaulted. I personally spoke to this young man, and with God as my witness, I tell you that he was credible. Shame on her. He was braver than any one of you sitting in these high places you so revere. Further, he was forced to sit next to his assailant the very next day. Dr. Grimes failed this young man and every other student in that school. We are on the verge of losing our county, and it all begins with these five or six seats. Nottaway is only a small microcosm of everything we read and see in the news at a national level. It is time to reverse course. That reversal begins with every one of you. I don't have the time tonight.
Ms. Yates, your time is up, please.
That's fine. Bye-bye.
Daphne Norton.
Thank y'all, all of you, for what you do. It just makes me sick that it's just come to all of this. We're trying to do business, and there's so much hate in this room tonight. See that sign right there? I was in here the night, and we put that up. Let's work towards doing that.
Amen.
Instead of fighting. And I will, I wanted to come tonight to address the water issue and the boundary line adjustment. We've been fighting over water for years, since my husband was on town council and my father-in-law was on the board. I want to ask a couple of questions and make some statements that may have a little weight on it, but I doubt it. When the VCBR announced they were expanding in June of 2018, were there any discussions about the impact the inspection, the expansion would have regarding the water then? What happened? That was 2018. Until the board members elected before 2015, the decision was made to end our relationship with the Commonwealth Regional Council. This is yet another example of exposing the county taxpayer to Pennywise and pound foolish. Was backing out of the CRC a final financial decision at a time when there could have been a greater chance of this water issue being resolved with the help of a neutral third party? And to that end, there may be a solution on the horizon as the county has rejoined the CRC to write a long overdue comp plan, but was that decision a day late and a dollar short? Most understand the financial impact of crew losing water to Prince Edward, but that's just part of the equation. We would in effect be paying for Prince Edward's infrastructure to build this facility and promote economic growth for them, while some in this county are willing to go a step farther and change boundary lines to leave a county behind that has been underserved by those of you who have sat in those seats for over a decade. The crossroad that Nottaway has been trying to maneuver has become a major intersection. We need to be certain we have positive decision makers in the future, and decision makers who place the vested interest of our citizens before partisan politics and man-made boundaries. We can't erase the past, but we can forge a new growth of future and prosperity. But look at all the revenue sources and work together with all of the towns. I read in the Burford Community News lately that David is taking on Goliath. That analogy may puchew in the national realm, but it's got to stop here. The political infighting on the local level where we have a true, real voice, doing so at the expense of our citizens and all of our natural resources, be it water, solar, or farmland. It's building a wall that should not exist here. It's a wall that needs to be on the U.S. border, not to begin to rise here. To be frugal, please do that. But it's just, it sickens me, it's so sad, when honor and a person's word and a handshake takes no merit anymore, that we have to bring lawyers with us to our meetings. As a lifelong resident of this county, I just don't have words for that. The fighting's got to stop, because the man upstairs is really disappointed. And to this end, please be willing to be frugal, but be wise. Be willing to take educated risks to preserve our children's future as stewards of the county funds that affect every town, every emergency service, every citizen. Let's start being people of our word. Thank you.
Amen, thank you. Board members, does anybody have any questions or clarification from Ms. Norton?
No.
Okay. Thank you again. Is everybody that signed up when you called? Okay. All right. We're going to move on. And just so the public knows, any motions that end in a 2-2 tie tonight, that motion will die, because we do not have a odd number of board members here tonight, so just wanted to let y'all know that for the record before we move forward. Next on the agenda is the public hearings. The first one is a special, special exception for Hall. Mr. Greg Zody, Planning Economic Development Director.
All right, good evening, board members and public. What I have before you tonight is a special exception request located at the intersection of Turkey Island Road and Indian Oak Road. The applicant is Mr. Samuel Hall. He lives at 10, 5801 Indian Oak Road. This area is zoned agricultural, minimal lot size of five acres. As I mentioned in my opening, this is in regards to him requesting a guesthouse on his home. This, I have, I do have some conditions, but I do want to note for the record that staff did not receive any telephone calls, any emails, and remonstrance to this application. The planning commission heard this meeting Tuesday night on 13th, and they voted to accept it, to forward it with recommendations of approval with the four conditions I've laid out. So, oh, I should note that this is supported in the, in the agricultural zoning district for the comprehensive plan, as well as it's consistent with language in the agricultural zoning district. After reviewing all 37 findings of fact, staff has determined, has recommended approval. And as I mentioned, the planning commission did recommend approval with these following five conditions. This special exception is granted for the guesthouse located on tax map number 12-2-5B. This special exception may be revoked by Nottaway County or by its designed agent for failure to comply with any of the listed or amended conditions made by staff, the planning commission, and/or the Board of Supervisors. Third, must have well-inseptic permits issued by the Health Department prior to occupancy. Fourth, must apply for and receive a certificate of occupancy from the Nottaway County building official. And lastly, no address will be assigned to the guesthouse, because a guesthouse is intended for temporary use and not permanent residence. And based on what Mr. Hall told me, he has three children, he has three parcels of land located there, and he wanted to provide space for his kids and his grandkids when they come to visit. And that's my presentation.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Zody? Okay. All right, well, board members, we need a motion to open the public hearing for Hall.
Move to open the public hearing, special exception permit for Hall.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The public hearing is now going to be open for the special exception for Hall. Is there anyone here in the public to speak for or against the special exception? For or against? Okay. All right, well, board members, entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the special exception Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Get it out. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The public hearing on special exception Hall is closed. Okay, what's your pleasure, board members, for this special exception here?
Move to approve the special exception for Hall.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Simmons. We have, all right, we have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed for the special exception for Hall. Onto the next item, the courthouse security fee increase. Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, this public hearing is associated with Virginia Code Section 53.1120, which allows for the locality to increase its court security fee up to $20. Now, the state code was amended a couple of years ago to allow for the increase from $10 to $20. This is essentially catching up our local code to reflect that. This fee is imposed on convicted defendants of criminal or traffic cases in either the district or circuit court. So this fee would only apply to those persons who find themselves in that, that situation, be they citizen or non-citizen. Now, while the court facilities have recently come under increased scrutiny, I would like to point out that this was an item that was brought forward early, early in the 20, in 2023, as we started the fiscal year 2324 budget process. A suggested motion is offered as part of the adoption of the fiscal year 2324 budget. So what I would recommend is, take your public comment and then act with the, with the budget. Don't want to have signed up to speak on this matter, but if they have any questions, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
Board members, y'all have any questions of, Mr. Costin? Okay, we need a motion to open the public hearing for the courthouse security fee increase.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is open for the courthouse security fee increase. Is there anyone that would wish, even though there's no one signed up, anyone want to speak for or against this item? For or against? All right. Board members, I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
All right, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The public hearing is closed for the courthouse security fee increase. Board members, what is your pleasure for this? I believe there's a suggested motion from staff.
Tied to the budget adoption, which is item I-2.
So do, do you want to defer this to them?
I would defer to that.
Okay.
That would be ideal.
All right. We will move on. Okay, right now, board members, we'd like to move forward with the, some presentations of employee recognitions. Mr. Costin?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we'd like to recognize the following individuals for one-year association with Nottaway County. Dawn H. Buchanan, Fiscal Assistant. Ms. Buchanan is actually over in the offices right now, working. Greg Zody, would you please stand up, be recognized. Deidra A. Knight, Library Aid. Larry D. Bailey, Convenience Site Attendant. And Clarence E. Morgan, Convenience Site Attendant. Each of these persons will receive, if they haven't already received. Oh, by all means, come forward, please.
Come forward, Mr. Morgan.
Morgan. And I'd like to present with you, present you with the, your Nottaway County lapel pin.
All right.
Good to see you, too.
Congratulations, Mr. Morgan. Thank you, sir.
He's the attendant at one of my regular stops.
All right.
Mr. Zody's received his pin earlier. And the next one would be Senior Animal Control Officer Sheila Estes, not here this evening. And a 10, for a five-year certificate, and a 10-year certificate for Logan M. Presley, the Human Resource Coordinator, also not here this evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could note, Chairman Bowen suggested that Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could note, Chairman Bowen suggested that rather than take time each month for these recognitions, we kind of do them like every six months. So these are folks who have been, hit these marks either between January or June of this year.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize those, of my colleagues.
Absolutely. And we'd like to thank everybody that's on staff at Notaway County, helping us to do the work of the citizens here. It's very greatly appreciated. I know sometimes it seems like it, it may not be, but we thank you all for your service and dedication, okay? Moving forward to departmental reports, Ms. Deanna Bryant.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to bring a few things before you that are not included in the report that's in your packet. There was a traffic alert that was sent out about Route 611. The utilities were relocated on that structure, and the detour is scheduled to begin on Wednesday, June 21st. And weather permitting, all the work should be done, and the road reopened by the end of July. Also had our contractor mobilize the Business 460 out here on Tuesday, and they'll be completing a pipe rehabilitation project. So you'll probably see some lane closures in that area. The Route 46 bridge, there's been some additional signs approved for the detour route. So once we get those signs fabricated, they will be installed. The mowing on the secondary routes is complete, and we have issued a notice proceed for another round of mowing on our primary routes. So that should begin within the next couple of weeks. The signal rebuilds in Crew. The installation for those lights is complete. We are awaiting final inspection, and the contractor should be vacating that area within the next couple of weeks, once everything is done. On Route 153, on June 20th, they're going to be installing centerline rumble strips, weather permitting. They're calling for some rain, so that may be delayed, but I wanted to let you know that. And that is all the additional information that I had for you. Do you have any, anything for me?
Members, y'all have anything from Ms. Bryant?
No.
Ms. Bryant, I just want to thank you. You and your team do a phenomenal job at keeping the county, sheriff's department, emergency services up to what's going on in case of any detours or anything. Thank you, and please thank your team for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything for solid waves? Mr. Costin?
Just the standard report.
Okay. Building inspection is in your report as well. Animal control, Ms. Estes is not here, the Peatmont Health District either, Notaway County Library is in your report as well. Ms. Grimes, did you, I thought I saw Ms. Grimes here earlier.
Dr. Grimes.
Yes. Did you have anything, Ms. Grimes?
Yes, ma'am.
Please come forward.
All right. You gotta buy it. You broke it. Greg, can you help her?
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, board members, Mr. Costin. One of my notes disappeared. Just a couple of things to share this evening for you. This is an exciting time of the year. The excitement really has gone away in that schools closed, you know? We get towards the end of the school year, weather starts to rise, kids get excited. We have the last day of school coming forward and graduation coming forward. Well, by the time we get to tonight, all of that is done. So we had graduation on Saturday, June 3rd, and we had about 135 graduates to walk across the stage and receive their diplomas from Notaway High School. That's always a special moment. Prior to that, on the Thursday night before graduation, we had class night, where seniors received recognition for scholarships, awards, and achievements over the course of the year. And Mr. Vaughn presented a scholarship to our students, and that was a very nice jacket that you had on, sir. It was very fine indeed.
They saw it when I came back.
He rented it.
I also, well, I tend to lean towards the colors of crimson and cream, and I hope that I am blessed enough to have as many number of years of service as you. What an honor. We also are pleased and proud and excited to talk about or to share our internship program, where we have an opportunity for our students to earn work-based experiences. And we have an internship program that we have started this summer officially, and we are very pleased that we have placed 31 students in internships for the summer. One of them has been replaced with the Board of Supervisors Office, County Administrator's Office. And thus far, our businesses have provided great feedback for the program. Our kids are excited, and it's a great opportunity for them to earn, develop skills, and earn a little bit of cash as well. And then finally, just this sort of out of order, but along the same lines, going back to graduation, you know, we always talk about graduation for kids who have completed the 12th grade. And we tend to think about graduation just in general when kids start high school, right? When they start high school, we start with, oh, you gotta do this, that, and the third, so that you can graduate. But the reality is graduation starts, that path to graduation starts the moment kids set foot in elementary school or primary school here, with pre-kindergarten or kindergarten, depending on when they start. And so our primary schools are really good about encouraging and supporting attendance and achievement of our students in the primary schools. And our, I have two examples to share with you, or two little quick things to share. At Blackstone Primary, this year, the moving on celebration was made into this grand occasion where the kids were, told it was a formal occasion, they were invited to dress up, their parents came, and it was in the auditorium, which is a big deal. That was really nice. And then the other thing that I think is really special, which really brings to light that connection between the path to graduation, starting when students enter school, and stays with them and with us until they complete the 12th grade, is that Crew Primary, this year, our seniors did their graduation, so seniors go back to the primary schools to do graduation walks. And at Crew Primary this year, our seniors went to Crew Primary to do their graduation walk, just so happens on the day that the pre-kindergarten students were having their graduation ceremony. And so what happened, and I have the wrong phone with the picture, but what happened was the seniors came through just as the pre-kindergarten students were on the stage. And so we have this wonderful picture of our pre-kindergarten students in the front and our graduating seniors behind them, that shows in picture that reality of, it starts when you enter school, and it culminates that senior year. And so that's really special. I love what I do. I love kids. That's why I'm an educator. And so this time of year, when we have these celebrations, really brings home a reminder that despite the things that can get in the way, we have to keep our focus on what the focus is, and that's our kids, and making sure that they have the supports necessary to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Grimes?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a little bit more about the internship program.
Yes, sir.
We have been helped this week, and we look forward to future weeks, by Ms. Diamond Jones. And she is working very closely with Ms. Kelly on records retention. And I like to say that when I say records retention, there's an emphasis on records removal.
Oh, digitizing. Yeah.
I broke the ice with, with Ms. Jones by showing her something off of the shelf in my office, and let her know that when that document was done, I was in high school. So we are, we're moving things, we're moving things along.
All right. Good deal. All right, no one's here from social services. Mr. Buddy Hyde, our emergency services coordinator. How you doing, sir?
Good, good, Mr. Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Members of the board, staff, citizens, good evening. You have your, you have my emergency services report for the month in your packet, and I want to just touch on a few highlights like I do every month. Few of the highlights are, this month, the things that are going on currently, in July, we're going live with a new incident reporting system that's standard across all four departments, which includes Blackstone Fire Department, Crew Volunteer Fire Department, Burkeville Fire Department, and Notaway Emergency Squad. And this is the first time in history we'll be on one system. And everybody, all stakeholders in all organizations, including the chiefs, were part of this process. We're really tickled, we've been working on this for quite a while. The go-live is with a company called ESO Solutions Incorporated. They've been wonderful. We've been on weekly meetings with all the chiefs and the designees of all the departments. So again, we're going to go live sometime in July. We're shooting for July 1, but it might be a week after that. And then what that will do for all citizens and board members is it allows one organization, like for instance, if Crew starts the call with a medical call, they can transfer the data seamlessly to the Notaway Emergency Squad when they arrive on scene. So there's just a wonderful feature, and we're going to have so many other features in it. Another new feature will be dropping the call times automatically from our CAD system at Notaway 911 Center. It will automatically populate into a call sheet while they're in the field. So when the dispatchers are loading it into the computer, it sends it through the airwaves. So if you're on a call and you have a critical time, you don't have to worry about calling on the phone and so forth. And at the end of the call, it populates all the rest of the times. So this is a wonderful project that everybody's looking forward to. Another thing is we had an elected officials class for you. Obviously, I just want to let everybody in public know, and the ones that are there at home tonight, the VDM representative came and tied EOC, and had a class for you to go over emergency, you know, during large disasters, just to refresh everybody on what declarations were, and how we do all the things, and where I come in, and where Mr. Costin comes in, and where all of our emergency organizations come in. And after that, I followed up with a, with a brief on the revised EOP that you signed last month. And, and that was a little time we had to show some slides on that. And then, of course, we took our proposals, we received our proposals on May 31 for the large radio project. And that's going to be ongoing, you know, it's going to be a couple of years out before it's in use. But we're at the proposal state, so for the next two months, our 12-person committee is actually going to be looking at these proposals. Now, I just want to remind everyone in the public that all of this will be forthcoming, but because it's a proposal under Virginia law, it's a procurement and a proposal act under the Code of Virginia, that when we're in a large project like this, and it's dealing with proprietary vendors, like the radio vendors, this isn't for you material yet. And even moving forward, they are proprietary models within the proposals, that one vendor can't know what the other vendor has in their technical specs. So to avoid litigation for the county, we have to follow this Code of Virginia procurement law as we're doing review on the technical specs. Now, we haven't even opened price proposals, we're looking at technical specs. The reason being there is that we're not ready to look at prices yet, we're ready to look at the technical proposals on an unbiased opinion. And obviously, it's kind of like going to buy a car, and you look at three cars, and you know one's the cheapest already, but then you start looking at the technical specs, which one's going to be a little bit more attractable to you. It's a little hard to mentally, you know, grasp that. So we're following the lead of the engineering firm that we hired to do, to do the work for the proposals for us. So again, that 11-person committee includes all of the chiefs, and, or their designee of the four agencies, and that includes the police departments, the fire departments, and EMS. Also has Mr. Costin and myself on the committee as well. So all of that is ongoing, and we're hoping that by July, that we can present to you what the findings of that are. We also had a closeout of our shelter upgrade grant, which I want to thank again, the Notaway County Public Schools, Dr. Grimes, Robbie Templeton, all of, all of the staff with the shelters, involved in the shelters. We closed that grant out. That check came to the county just a few weeks ago, so we were glad to receive that check from the state for upgrading those shelters. The other good news on shelters is I got word this week that the shelter trailer that we've been talking about several months was purchased with a grant through the Regional Planning Commission in Richmond, and we were able to put Notaway under that umbrella. So we receiving, or receiving a trailer, this is a support trailer that will allow us to take materials from the Burkeville Elementary School to the Crew Primary School to the Blackstone Primary School. Wherever we decide to set up one of the shelters during a disaster, we will now have a trailer ready stock with, with the equipment we already have, plus a few items we'll buy. But the trailer is no match, and it's going to be given to us under the grant. And I will be picking that up, and we're happy to report that Erby Equipment Sales in Blackstone received a winning bid on that, and we'll be picking that up next week from Mr. Erby. We also have recruitment retention projects going on, and I think I mentioned that last month, that is ongoing with all of the chiefs and the designees of the department. So if you have any questions at me at this time, I'd be glad to take those.
Members, y'all have any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Greatly appreciate your time and effort here, sir. Going to the constitutional officers' reports and comments, as I scandal this, I don't believe I see any of the constitutional officers outside of Ms., oh, yeah. Come on, Greg. I'm sorry. Apologies.
That's a great one.
I got the jitters.
You were doing so well.
I know. Right, right. Yeah. My pen got happy. That's right. That's right. So ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Greg Zodi, once again, planning.
I don't have nothing for the month of May to add, but the really good news I wanted to share with you all and the public is that we were awarded, we received our 2023 VATI application, and we were, this, the eastern part of the service area was awarded $8.3 million. Eight point one, I stand corrected.
Say that one more time.
The VATI grant, the.
Just the value.
Sorry?
Just the value.
Oh, value, eight point one million.
For.
For the eastern, yeah, for the eastern area. We're talking to the west, you know, Pennsylvania and Charlotte and whatnot, and Bedford, including Bedford, I believe, and Campbell County. But on our side, we were, the eastern side, not just us, but the eastern side was awarded eight point one million dollars. So it's a total award of 11.6 million dollars. I will, will let you know that the compliance review was underway, I think, last month, and that was approved. But construction begins in Amelia, and then others, such as Notaway, will follow after approximately 60 days, because right, the phasing, the preliminary phasing, and all that is already complete. So I just wanted to update that with you. I really had nothing next beyond the comprehensive plan to a big joll, so I did bring copies.
This is our official new draft.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to point out that the planning commission, again, met on Tuesday night, May 13th, and Mr. Fortune, the assistant, or deputy director with Commonwealth Regional Council, presented changes, and we put it to the commission members to discuss the updates. And there was, I think, the two changes that have been brought up before. I've tabbed those in here, and that, the first one is on page 98, and I ran a yellow highlighter through that. I didn't want to black it out, I wanted y'all to be able to be transparent, let y'all see. But this whole section, the purpose of this plan is to provide general policy, general guidelines. And the recommendations just above the area that's highlighted states that the Notaway County should consider safe development of solar and wind energy that minimizes impacts to land uses, adjacent properties, and the environment, particularly for economic development purposes. As the county amends its ordinances and policies to regulate renewable energy production within its borders, the county should set guidelines, including, and most importantly, not, but not necessarily limited to, the following. And it was brought up during the discussion to strike that first bullet point there, and on page 121, where strategy one, under subsection J, the goal, and then the strategy one, that be stricken as well. My understanding from what I heard and discussions I participated in, is that that's really more appropriate area for ordinance, if the board so chooses to have an ordinance. Right now, we have no ordinance. That was repealed last year. And that was, my takeaway from that, was that we, we get our specificities in the ordinance. And with that, the planning commission agreed, and they moved to forward it to you all with a positive recommendation. in the ordinance. And with that, the planning commission agreed, and they moved to forward it to you all with a positive recommendation with those changes, recommended changes. Now, I will say regarding the public hearing, 15 dash, 15.2 dash 2223 about the comprehensive plans, we've met our, one of the requirements is that we advertise, and we held our public hearing after due notification on, I believe, is January 25 of 2023, where both the planning commission and the board supervisors participated, and we sat back and listened to the public. We heard the public. We've had it on our agenda for, gosh, four months, playing, or six months now, over six months now, on the planning commission's agenda to discuss these issues. And there's not been a lot of discussion. We got a lot of the editorial, or the typographical errors and whatnot, or the misnomer for barfoot after it was changed, I mean, changed to barfoot. So the planning commission, in my opinion, has done its job. It's made some amendments to the original draft, which the section I cited from state code does allow. And the planning commission furthermore has handed this to you, saying this is their draft. And now the board supervisors can amend or whatnot, how they see fit. So for instance, if you didn't like that section that was stricken by the plan, recommended stricken by the planning commission, you'll can restore it. You know, I'd always recommend, you know, we don't want the comp plan to become an ordinance. That's not what the purpose of a comprehensive plan. It's a guiding document. And that's all I had to say.
Okay. All right. Just for clarification, if I can, was the planning commission unanimous?
Yes.
They were unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what you're saying is, these items that are marked to be stricken are, should be enforced through an ordinance?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. That was the, and I have to say, it's, they recommended striking that. I have to be very clear with that.
Okay.
Since they don't have the legislative authority.
Okay. Is the, is there any plans from the planning commission to produce an ordinance that would cover this?
When directed by the board supervisors.
Okay. All right. Board members, did y'all have any questions for him?
Mr. Chair, I have one. Mr. Zodi, if removal of the reference to kilowatt production is because it's a specificity, specificity that's more appropriate for an ordinance, what's the difference between that and references to minimum and maximum lot sizes, or fencing, you know, screens? What, aren't those all specific?
Yeah, and those are, in my opinion, ma'am, those are more tied to design standards that we have for every other use. This makes me a little bit uneasy keeping it in there because, to me, when you're talking about limiting a certain output, or however, whatever, meeting the kilowatts that the town or the county produces in totality, I would agree with the planning commission. I think it should be, it should have been stricken because we, if you recall, must have public comment during our public hearing on the 25th, was regarding the ordinances, and not to have them in a lot of cases, which I can, I can understand that. But the comprehensive plan, again, we don't want to get into limitations, have that discussion about limitations in this document. And that's not to say that's off the table, by no means. I mean, I certainly, my opinion, professional opinion, was that that's a very good policy to include if the board were to choose to go the solar ordinance route. So I would say, it's not, just because it's not in theory, doesn't mean it won't happen. I think it's an excellent idea. Rockingham has a good ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I was at attendance that night. One of the other arguments that was made for striking it was, it set a limit, but there was nothing keeping one project from hitting that limit. Whereas they thought if they, I'm just kind of repeating what was the argument, was rather than have one big project that hit the limit, you could spread those out in smaller projects. So that's where the smaller size, the acreage factor came in. They were, the person who brought it forward, the planning commission member who brought it forward, was concerned about having one project come in and hitting that limit, that the size of that project would be very impactful, whereas smaller projects would be less impactful.
All right. The board is, it has to, I mean, pretty much, with the comprehensive plan, anyway, we need to adopt a solar ordinance, don't we?
That's, that is entirely a board decision. And I'm not trying to shirk anything.
No, 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 no. I mean, it's just, so...
The, I think, if I can...
Yes.
The adoption of the comprehensive plan would still require, if you want to go forward with a solar ordinance or renewable energy, let me cast it a broader, broader net, renewable energy to include wind, because that's what you had in your zoning ordinance before you rescinded that piece. It was solar and wind. There was, that was rescinded going back to, and I think this well predates myself, Mr. Zodi, the county administrator from Mecklenburg who came in and said, Mr. Carter, you need to get your comprehensive plan done first. So this would be the first step, and then you could revisit the zoning ordinance. Now, we could pick up the zoning ordinance as it was originally presented, or we could make modifications that addresses that kilowatt piece. And I think what Mr. Zodi's saying is, you know, if you have it in the comp plan, it's just one more item that you could work into a zone, into the zoning ordinance. But if you don't have it in the comp plan, it still remains one more item you can work into the zoning ordinance.
All right. So at this point, when are we looking at potentially having this comprehensive plan ready for adoption?
Honestly, I think it's when the board decides, if you all are so inclined to hold a public hearing, which is, again, the board's decision, I'll need time for advertising, and however long you all want to take to deliberate, to deliberate. And I may defer to counsel, but I don't think there's a time limit on the deliberation.
All right. Mr. Zodi, and this may be a little bit unorthodox, but the citizens that are still here, Ms. Mason, Mr. Mason, Ms. Wooton, would y'all be amicable to a meeting with myself, Mr. Zodi, Mr. Costin, to have a discussion about this ordinance, to see if the ordinance gives y'all the safety net that y'all feel like the outspoken citizens are looking for? Would y'all be willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll get that set up, and we'll get staff to reach out to y'all, and we'll get that sooner rather than later at their convenience, if that'll work for y'all.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, you're talking about the ordinance that was held, that was proposed?
No, just like, just like a roundtable discussion with them to see what may be in this ordinance that they would like to have, that would suffice to them about this kilowatt.
To be, okay, to be, okay, to be reflected in the comp plan.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So does that, does that, does that work for you as well? I mean, we can, if we can get a meeting of the minds and have something presented to the board?
Well, I can still come, but, right. I can, yes, sir. I'll be happy to speak to the facts.
All right.
The problem, I...
Yes. I think we, I think we can have that meeting before next month's meeting. Yes, ma'am.
The only problem with that is...
Clarification, Mr. Chairman, will that be open to the public?
Absolutely. We can advertise that.
That's, that was my point.
Yep. Yeah, because, I mean, any discussions that we have, the public can attend, and...
We're dealing with a few people from a certain area, when it should be have representatives from the county.
Right. And we will present that in a timely manner to get that information out prior to a public hearing.
Okay. You missed my point. But anyway, move on.
Okay. Okay.
You completely missed my point.
Do you want to make a point, Mr. Ball?
I've already made my point. My point was, it's not, you're too inclusive.
But if we're going to share with the public, I mean...
You have six or seven people. That's not representative of Notaway County.
Okay, but they are the ones that are here before the board with concerns.
Yeah. That doesn't mean other people are not concerned.
I understand, but that's what the public hearing would be for, the second public hearing would be for, to address those concerns.
Okay.
But to be clear, what, what you want to do is have a second public hearing on this proposed comprehensive plan.
Yes.
But also a meeting with whoever wants to come regarding what the zoning, what the zoning ordinance would look like.
Mm-hmm.
And then try, I guess it's almost like reverse engineering. You want to have an idea of what the zoning ordinance would be palatable, and then make sure that that groundwork is in the comp plan.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, okay. All right. Did you have anything else, Mr. Zodi?
I did know if y'all were going to announce a public hearing at another date, so I can post this online. Because my, Mr. Chair, my, my professional preference has always been to give the board a draft copy of the, of a document after it's been reviewed and moved forward by the planning commission. But I want to put this online as soon as possible, so it's available to the general public as well on our website.
Right. I think we can set that meeting up just as quickly as possible to also have that available for you to move forward as quick as you would like to.
All right. Because I also need to let Mr. Fortune know.
But is it, I mean, there's nothing preventing him from scanning this and uploading it, correct, as it is, the new draft one?
I've already got him PDF and everything.
Okay.
But I just want...
Yeah, then if any changes, then we can, we can adjust those changes online.
Certainly. Certainly. Thanks, Chair. Thank you, board.
So would the board like to set a public hearing?
For next month?
For next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
May?
I just want to clarify, will we have, this will be a public hearing for the comprehensive plan, will we have an ordinance in place, or before then, or how are we going to ensure that what you're talking about is covered, or that there's nothing conflicting between the ordinance and the comprehensive plan? What's, how's this thing going to play out?
I think the way it would have to play out is the meeting takes place, but we proceed to advertise for the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
The meeting takes place, and the results from that meeting can be presented during the public hearing. And then, the board then chose to say, okay, we're happy with the comprehensive plan as it's presented, or as it's amended through whatever, the meeting and the public hearing. Once you've adopted the comprehensive plan, then it would be the board's pleasure to decide if they want to move forward with a, with a solar ordinance.
That's right.
So July, and I think, let me say somewhere around September, because if the board wants to consider some of those pieces in the Rockingham ordinance that does that kilowatt cap, that was not in the ordinance that was originally proposed. So we'd have to work some of that language into that document.
Right. And if something crazy was to happen with this, after this meeting or anything, and, I mean, the public hearing could be postponed at that point.
We could postpone.
That's right.
But your intent, as I'm getting the feel, your intent is to go forward with this draft for public hearing in July?
Yes.
Okay, at your regular meeting.
Is that what y'all?
Yes.
Okay. Any other question?
None here. Just wanted to be sure staff was clear. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Watrous?
Yeah, we're in line.
There we go. All right. Thank you. All right. Well, members, unfinished business here. The animal shelter update. Mr. Costin?
All right. The board has a packet, in their packet, they have a memo from me. You've already seen basically the materials that were associated with this. After a 30-day public bid process, the county received only one bid for construction of the animal shelter. That bid came in at $4,922,000. There was only one bidder that expressed any sort of interest in the project. The opening took place in my office and was witnessed by several folks, including citizens, as well as a representative of the bidder, that was Kenbridge Construction. Mr. Phillips, the architect retained by the county with RRMM, tried to get a meeting with the firm to see if we could start some sort of information gathering on what was, what was basically the drivers here, as well as see if we could do any cost engineering to see if we could bring that price down. Those efforts to me were not successful. But the bidder did provide some information to Mr. Phillips that's set out before you in the memo. I think two that are of note, that the breakdown was $4 million in the building, the balance of the bid was in the site work. There's really nothing in the design drawings that's causing the cost issues. The critical factor here is the bid price is due to there being no subcontractors looking for work. They have too much work already, not enough laborers, and the location is too remote. Thus, those subcontractors that are willing to provide a bid to the general contractor are increasing those bids. No way to staff support going forward at this time with the bid as submitted. Rejection of the bid is recommended. And I will note that at the recent CARES meeting on June 7, I reviewed all this information with that entity, and they voted formally and unanimously to support the board action to reject the bid. Further consideration, this project should be tied to comprehensive financial planning, and I have a meeting next week with Davenport. But at this time, we have a suggested motion that would reject the bid from Kenbridge based on its price and lack of detail in the schedule of values. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Board members, we have two things here. Number one, we have that motion for that, but also there may be some additional discussion. Ms. Shuckel, did you have anything that you wanted to add at this point, or do you want to take care of the motion first?
What would be most appropriate? Do you want to take care of the motion first? I do have a couple of questions about the shelter, and then some additional comments to share from the CARES committee.
I'd be happy to take the questions and...
Okay. I had discussed with you, we received a May 16 letter from the DEQ about their review of the stormwater management plan. And the letter came back with 16 comments that required addressing. And because we've stalled a little on this bid process, what is the current status? Are we with the DEQ? Do we move forward with responses, and...
The architect has responded to the DEQ letter, and they're satisfied with those responses. What would change the DEQ status is a change in the footprint.
Okay.
So if we made it bigger, it changes the calculations. If we made it smaller, it changes the calculations, and we have to go back all through that bid, that DEQ process again.
Can we make those, can we get a copy of those, their comments?
Yes. Did I send that letter to you? I think I did. Could you make share with the rest of the board?
For some reason, they have started, they, when Ms. Shuckleton was the chairman, they had her down on one of the filing documents with DEQ as the point of contact. So we're still trying to clean that up with DEQ and the architect.
And I apologize.
But I'd be happy to send those to you.
And I apologize. I said comments. I meant the responses from DEQ. Can the board get them and make them available to the public as well?
The responses from RRMM.
Yes.
To the DEQ. Yes, I'd like to see that as well. Thanks. Also, I hope this is the appropriate time to share some other comments from the CARES committee. They're asking that the $4.9 million bid not stand as the new estimate on the shelter. They think that sets up an unreliable cost estimate target. They are advocating that we retain the footprint while exploring cost reductions. They're hoping that the county will set forth some plan on when to rebid, even if it's just to take the temperature of relevant market factors on a monthly or bimonthly basis. Revised projected timeline with mitigating factors would be ideal. They hope that we'll continue with the forward momentum in communications. They did note that Town of Burkeville had reported that engineering work is complete, and permits from VDOT and Department of Health have been approved. However, the estimate for the entire job, Mayor Welch, I believe, that was to run the water and sewer lines, had gone from $250,000 to $1.2 million. Was your last estimate, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the ballooned estimate. And our engineer that we use is way overshooting.
Okay.
So that ebook's good when I come in low.
Yeah, I was going to say, how many balloons did they use?
Right.
It seems like they shot low, and it's actually much more likely.
Okay. And then finally, a report from the CARES committee on their contribution scorecard. They have total donations and pledges, $477,335. In-kind donations, $1,385. In-kind donations, 1,385. Appraised value of donated land, 75,000. Petco grant, 7,500. Total contributions, all sources, 561,220. So that's impressive.
That's great.
Yes. All board members, to your point there, Ms. Shuckleton, about the cost moving forward, is there some standard that we should be saying that this board is willing to go to this amount? Has CARES stated anything like that as well? You know, what they're...
Not, but I'm wondering, once we get into our capital improvement project discussions, if we set, and once you're going to have a conversation with Davenport in relation to our capital improvement plans, and then maybe we set at that time what we feel like the top's going to be for us?
Yes, yeah, I suppose board members, y'all put your thinking caps on so we can give them some sort of an agreement upon range that we'd be willing to put into this project, you know? And hopefully, I hate to say it, but if a recession hits, that may speed up the process for rebidding, but I don't know how soon you rebid any of this out because it's going to be, it's going to be a while. Because some of the CARES group that I talked to was talking about possibly six months. I mean, in a month, two months, unless somebody from the government says we're in a recession, I don't think it's going to be fruitful.
I think they're just hoping that even in considering delays, we're going to keep it in the forefront and not let it...
Absolutely. Yeah, I think, I mean, as far as me, Ms. Shuckleton, anytime you're in these meetings, absolutely, feel free to speak for me, I absolutely want to keep this up front.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so board members, we have a suggested motion here to reject the bid that was for the proposed animal shelter from Kenbridge Construction. Can I get, does someone want to put that motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reject the bid from Kenbridge Construction for construction of a new animal shelter due to price of the bid and lack of detail in the schedule of values.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion to reject the bid from Kenbridge Construction is approved. Thank you, board members. The next item for discussion is the FY 2324 budget adoption. Mr. Costin.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a memo from me. The board has worked diligently during very fluid and challenging budget season, and with the loss of the Finance Director, the state budget adoption completion being delayed. They've worked, we've worked through that. This work has included multiple work sessions, many discussions, and of course, the public hearing conducted on June 1. Recognizing the budget as presented is balanced, which is required by law, will have to be revisited, and the adoption date of July 1 must be met. Staff proposes a suggested motion you have before you, which sets out the amount, the conditions, the caveat, such as pending receipt of all outstanding federal and state funding, that you adopt the tax levies as presented, which are unchanged, and that you establish the security fee of $20 pursuant to the code section cited earlier. Then over, then you'll be a second motion requiring to appropriate the money as reflected in that motion. There are a number of things, as Mr. Abbott has pointed out, that we can take up at that time when we have to revisit the budget, because quite frankly, there are a number of things that we don't know we may have to take up, depending on what the state does. But we can address many of Mr. Abbott's concerns at that time. I do want to be clear about one thing. Certain members of this board, Supervisor Simmons and Supervisor Rourke, have been engaged with me in conversations with representatives of Crew about the roof at the library. And there's never been a commitment on my part of $200,000. There has been discussions that the board could commit $200,000 from the ARPA funds. That's all I want to say on that.
Okay. Okay, board members, you have it in front of you, the suggested motions, and if I may ask, as we read through this motions, can we take a formal vote on each individual item on its own? Number one, then two, then three?
Then over to the appropriation.
Right.
So four separate motions?
Yes.
I see no reason why you can't do that.
Okay. Well, members, does anybody want to make the first motion?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question before we move forward with the motion? Mr. Abbott, I believe, maintained that this was the very first original budget that was presented to us with no changes. As I recall, the original budget was about a $57 million budget. This is a $48 million budget, so this is not the original budget.
This is not the original budget. The original budget presented to you all at direction was to show no cuts.
Correct.
So from there, it's been whittled down to 48.
One personal privilege, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My statement was for the July, or for the June 1 statement, where the budget was given at 48 million something. That's the budget that hasn't changed.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's my clarification.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. All right. Was there anything else, Ms. Shuckleton?
No.
Okay. All right, board members, it's up to y'all.
Excuse me, I think, Mr. Abbott, you had something else to say? I believe you did, right?
What, ma'am?
It seems like you had something else you wanted to make public. Is there a statement you'd like to make public?
There's several things I'd like to make public, but not tonight.
Okay. Sorry.
No problem. Okay. All right, board members, if we can move to the motions, please?
I move to adopt the Nottoway County budget for fiscal year June 30, 2024, totaling 48,257,65, as presented, pending receipt of all outstanding federal and state funding and all obligated and committed funds to be carried over from the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. And recognizing salary increases are deferred to be determined and retroactive to July 1, 2023.
Can I get a second on that motion?
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for number one of the suggested motions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. The motion passes three to one to adopt the Nottoway County budget for fiscal year 2324. There's a second motion that needs to be made, please.
I move to adopt the tax levies as presented for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the levies as presented for 2324. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. The motion passes, the tax levies are adopted. Motion three, please.
Establish the courthouse security fee at $20 pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 53.1-120.
Can I get a second, please?
I second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes to establish the security fees at $20. Okay, can we get the final motion, please, to appropriate?
I move to appropriate the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 Nottoway County budget totaling 48,257,65, including all outstanding purchase orders and committed funds continued upon receipt of all state and federal funding.
Can I get a second, please?
I second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to appropriate for fiscal year 2324 has passed. All right, new business, board members. The library board appointment, Mr. Costin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the library staff has confirmed that Susan Nash, who is presently serving as chair, is willing to continue her service on the library board. You have a suggested motion for reappointment.
Okay, board members, do you have the motion in front of you? Does someone make the motion, please?
I move to reappoint Susan Nash to the Nottoway County Library Board for a term ending December 31, 2026.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, here, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Susan Nash is reappointed. Okay. Next item is the Prince Edward Resolution. Mr. Costin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you a resolution endorsing the development of a regional public water system. This matter was before you in April this year, but was struck from the agenda. So the memorandum that follows is the same wording as you saw before you in April. The board will find a resolution so entitled, offered by Prince Edward during a meeting in August of 2022. The resolution before you has been altered only to the extent of the date, the chair, which also has changed, in the place of the Nottoway format for resolutions. Also included for your review are the code sections and act reference within the body of the resolution, which governs the carrying in of utilities from one jurisdiction to another. For several months, representatives of Nottoway County and the towns located therein have been meeting with some regularity concerning this topic. At the present time, the Department of General Services has re-engaged with the town of Crew via its engineers and consultants as a potential water provider to the state facilities located in Nottoway County. To support and further that engagement, staff recommends the enclosed resolution not be acted upon favorably. You have a suggested motion before you. Be happy to take any questions at this time.
Members, do y'all have any questions, Mr. Costin?
I'll make that motion, too.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, as y'all hear, Mr. Vaughn is asking for the suggested motion. The suggested motion reads, I move the resolution titled endorsing the development of a regional public water system offered by Prince Edward County before us this evening be denied. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, that motion, I mean, that offer of Prince Edward has been denied. Next item is the Crew Boundary Line Adjustment. Mr. Costin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have several documents that follow from the town of Crew relative to a map and a proposal for a boundary line adjustment. There is a suggested motion there, which would direct staff to prepare the necessary documents, the legal staff, excuse me, to prepare the necessary documents for boundary line adjustment for the town of Crew, and for the administrative staff to advertise the public hearing that is necessary to be held by both localities. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Board members, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Costin? Okay, there is a suggested motion, and that is before you in your package there, if someone would like to read the motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we, I don't really have questions for Mr. Costin, but I would like to comment. In an earlier conversation today I had with Mayor Welch of Burkeville, he introduced, I think, some legitimate questions and concerns about the boundary line adjustments and whether we, what the impact would be if we do this for Crew. I'm somewhat of a disadvantage because I've not been in on the meetings that have occurred and heard, I've gotten reports from third parties. One point that he did make was that we delay any vote on this because District 1 will be impacted by this, has the potential to be impacted by this, and our District 1 seat is not filled at this time, and we felt like there should be a representative on the board from District 1 before a vote was taken on this of any sort to move forward. And I would be, that's going to be my position as we go through this evening.
My position is, I was going to ask for a 90-day extension, so that, I feel like Crew has very intelligent people, and so do Burkeville. And I feel like they can sit down and work this out. Should be worked out. And it should be worked out within Nottoway County. That's my position on it. But I do hope we can delay it until the 90 days.
Mr. Welch had actually asked for a 30-day delay with the contingency by this board that Crew and Burke will come to the table, successfully negotiate it, and have it resolved by the time we come back to the next month's board meeting. Is that, was my understanding from our conversation today?
Yes, I mean, we want to go 60 or 90, I'm not going to be opposed to that. I just think that it needs to be sat downs, that two towns can sit down with representatives and talk. If we leave the county, we leave Blackstone, we leave Prince Edward, we leave the state, everybody else out of it. It needs to be two towns that sit down and conversate, because it seems that there was some meetings that excluded Burkeville from them. And I know there was, there's been some misrepresentation that myself walked away from boundary line meetings. When I walked away from it, Mr. Sean Davis was in the meetings with us. Ms. Helen Simmons was there, Mr. Ted Costin. We weren't talking boundary line, we were talking water line. I walked away because my town supported the Prince Edward side. I wasn't going to sit in a battle where I was getting beat up from two, three other jurisdictions over what my citizens wanted. So I said, I'm not going to continue to get bad through it. I think it's in the best interest of everybody for the two towns to work out the best.
She's proposing 30 days, I'm proposing 90. Let's compromise at 60.
Could Mr.?
Yeah, actually, I would not be in favor of that. There is a lot that has not been brought forth to the public body. And just simply put, no one has told anyone that they couldn't attend those meetings, and there was always been a seat there for Burkeville. Just because the mayor got up and left did not mean council members from Burkeville could not have had a seat at the table. Now, if they won't tell that, I don't know what to say about that. But, I mean, there is, I'll be honest about this, very honest about this. Everybody on this board knows I record closed session. I have recordings that are very concerning when I have elected officials from Burkeville stating that they got into this only because they wanted to be a thorn in Crew's side. Furthermore, there's been discussions with the elected officials, with myself and the former Mr. Bowen, that said that elected official favored, would be in favor of allowing Crew to do that boundary line adjustment to 723, as long as they left the prison out of it. And see, none of that's being brought to us in the public meeting or anything. The other thing is, I believe we, unless I misunderstood something tonight, the attorney for Burkeville tonight made the comment that if we voted, or if we could wait. So they presented that, knowing that they don't have representation. Ms. Simmons and I have been in the room with these meetings, and why didn't...
Are you on that committee?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So Ms. Simmons and I have been in those committee meetings, and no one's called us. And the other concern I have is, has Burkeville reached out to Crew and said, hey, let's have a conversation? Or is this a stall tactic? Well, as of today, I spoke with the mayor and several council members, and that answer is no.
So, Mr. Rourke, my problem is, Burkeville is in Nottoway County, and so is Crew and Blackstone. And it should be, they need to sit down and talk and work this thing out. That's the way I feel about it.
And there's nothing that we're doing, Mr. Vaughn, that prevents them from doing that.
So, Mr. Rourke, how, do you feel that it would be better form to have District 1 seat filled and someone here representing District 1 when we make choices about this? Or how do you feel about that?
Well, I think everybody ought to have representation, but at the same token, their attorney tonight mentioned voting on it. Either or. So you can't have it both ways. Either you want the representation there or you don't. So, you know, I would just like to see a consistent path here. And right now, we've not been seeing that. Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
The board of task force that has become called was a, a, all of them, and Mr. Costin, where you would all come together and try to work together to come to a conclusion that would work out best for the citizens of Nottoway County. Burkeville exited that a year ago. Because as Mr. Welch said, at that point, we were trying to find a solution to the Prince Edward issue. It's not the town of Crew's fault, or the town of Blackstone's fault, or even anyone of this day is his fault, that the town of Burkeville didn't choose to stay in it long enough to see what it turned into over the next eight to 12 months. This is not just a Crew issue, this is a Nottoway County issue. This is a town of Blackstone issue, this is a town of Crew issue, this is $670,000, $670,000 issue. The table's been opened, the door's been opened, the phones haven't stopped working, the emails haven't stopped working, and at any time, in the last 12 months, if the town Burkeville wanted to be part of the countywide discussion of this situation, they have been more than welcome to be there.
Do you want to come to the mic?
No, I don't need to. I just want, you're the only ones that need to be aware, is that while we didn't elect to bring counsel tonight, I wasn't even aware until I read the agenda that you guys were going to take up a question of Crew's boundary line request. I was going to sit here and just make sure that whatever tomorrow's gossip was, I found... I was going to sit here and just make sure that whatever tomorrow's gossip was, I found out tonight. So, it's not really fair that we're in the situation that we're in, but to be presented information that is not factual and not accurate and made that to having Crew being portrayed as some kind of backdoor seeking agreement organization, that's not fair to Ms. Simmons, that's not fair to Mr. Vaughn, that's not fair to Mr. Costin, Mr. Van Orby, the group of Blackstone. We've worked on this nonstop for two years. It's not our fault that somebody doesn't want to come to go over there. They could have been there anytime.
So, if there's still, so, all that, okay, I get, but if there's still some maybe unanswered questions and maybe they have been answered and you just weren't present at the table to, to hear, but it seemed like significant issues. If, Burkeville, as I understand it right now, is currently content with wells as your source of water, but if the opportunity for economic development presents an additional water source would be needed. If, if Blackstone, and I am totally against allowing Prince Edward to come in if we've got the resources in Nottoway County to provide water, so if Blackstone and Crew work out something and Blackstone runs the water and at some point Burkeville wants to tap into that. It's already tapped in. Is Burkeville a customer of Blackstone or a customer of Crew? Would they be purchasing the water from Crew? But, which could be a significant something, it seems like something that should be worked out ahead of time. You know, it could be a significant.
See, I'll give you some contractual information on something that might could be maybe down the road.
But how do you go into something, enter an agreement of this sort with significant questions unanswered? If.
What's, what's clear, Ms. Shekerton, is that the prison, DHDs and Piedmont are clearly in our service area. We've been providing water to those facilities since the day they opened.
And I, I understand and agree with that.
And because of that, everybody in this county that has a job there, everybody who's ever had a job there, everybody who's ever depended on any of the income, including this body, that those facilities presented, that was built on the back of the town of Crew. All we're asking is to help insulate, provide another layer of leverage in our negotiations with Department of General Services, with Blackstone, with everybody else to make this work out best for the county, so that you guys aren't the only ones that are standing in between us and another county invading ours. That's it.
Right.
It also develops our area between Crew and that area for potential industrial and economic development down the road.
Right.
Unsubstantiated, but we're already providing the water today.
Chairman, may I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
So, with this, a boundary line adjustment for Crew, and that brings your, the prison into Crew's area, so how would that affect the current arrangement under which that facility now processes Burkeville sewage?
They're not looking to do that for sewage.
So, that would not, there would not be an impact on that kind of thing? These are just questions that have come up that.
Would it be great to have known?
Yeah, right. And I get it, I agree. Would have been great to have known, I had it before now. No, I, I understand.
It is not my understanding, we have the ability, we provide sewer lines out as far as they hope to. We have the potential to provide that further out at obviously quite a bit of expense, as well as an increase in, in our plan. Anything else we'd have to do to that? I'm not the expert, my town manager would be the one to answer this question, but I don't think that I've ever heard any discussion about taking over the sewage treatment for those three facilities.
Right.
Am I wrong, Mr. Costin? Have you ever heard them discuss the sewer? Come on.
So, how about if, if Crew through a boundary line adjustment takes in the state facilities, what happens to the revenue that I understand from state reimbursement currently around, let's just shoot, $400,000 that goes to Burkeville Fire EMS for services?
Simple answer, we've said it publicly, we've said it privately, we've said it in between ourselves, in mind of what's here, we do not have the first responder unit that's going to go to there, our fire department doesn't want any parts that can provide that service. I think everybody's agreed that a simple memorandum of understanding, memorandum of agreement, whatever department wants, we'd be willing to set up whatever for our needs that we're comfortable with, because we don't have the reason. It's not even a blue question.
Ms. Shekerton, to your point there with that question there, that is where we would bring Buddy in to work that agreement out, because a memorandum of understanding may do it, but then again, it may not, because as I, as I believe, as district lines change, so does the dispatch area. So, that is something that I believe can be negotiated through the emergency services coordinator, through the fire departments and the rescue squad as well.
So, the, the questions then are, to me, these are significant considerations. Should they all be addressed and answered before we make this formal boundary line adjustment? I'm, I'm with you on that.
Well.
I don't have a problem if you guys want to put it off. My, my code members, my, I don't have a problem with this except for the fact that what has been stated here tonight and, and the, the actions that have been taken by town of Burkeville to prolong something that's been two and a half years in the making. I started talking about this the day I got elected to my seat, and I have worked on this every month, every week since 2000 and whatever, it seems like 25 years ago. I don't have a problem if you guys want to do your due diligence, my mayor and my council are going to, because we feel like we're doing the things that we need. We have a public hearing scheduled for July the 10th at our next regular meeting.
Well, board members also, just remember this, we are not formally voting on the boundary line adjustment. Tonight, what's in front of us is just simply going to have them draft to a public hearing. That is it. I see no reason why to stop that, simply because they can, Burkeville can still reach out to Crew and they can still meet, and at any time, if they so much as want to join the towns together, guess what? They can withdraw their boundary line adjustments at any time and say, "You know what? We want to combine the two towns and just grow the heck out of the western end of Nottoway County." But, that's on them.
You won't, you won't live long enough to see that happen.
One thing I thought we might want to clarify tonight, you talked about us doing our due diligence. I think this is between the towns.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree, but we must go to public hearing, and so, and when they put it on us here at this public hearing point, I see no reason for us to slow that process down because then we're being part of the pro. And, and matter of fact, in the cares meeting, there was an elected official from Burkeville that said Nottoway County has a habit of kicking the can down the road. So, according to that statement in a cares meeting, well, let's break that mold. Let's not kick the can down the road, let's go to public hearing, and then if them two towns work something out, God bless you.
Let's, let's wait until they get, we name a person to fill their seat.
They'll be here for the public hearing though, Mr. Vaughn. I mean, still, we're, we're kicking the can down the road and, and I.
I don't see it that way.
But, we are, what we're doing now is deciding whether Crew, so they can do their public hearing. This is, we haven't even gotten to Burkeville doing their public hearing, the boundary line adjustment.
That's right. So, I mean, and there's no actions taken after a public hearing, it's just getting something off of our plate. That's all it is.
This is for the county's public hearing.
This would be to proceed with the county's public hearing.
The counties would have their own.
They would, yes, they have to have theirs, and they can be done jointly. My recommendation at the last Water Task Force meeting, Mr. Davis, you weren't there, but the mayor was, was let's have this done independently.
That's right.
So, it doesn't look like any deals have been done. And Ms. Simmons and Mr., Supervisor Simmons, Supervisor Vaughn heard me say that, that we need to, to have separate public hearings, more opportunity for people to talk, but it doesn't look like the deal's done. And I would have said the same thing about the Burkeville situation.
I'll be honest with you, if we, if, if we go ahead and move towards public hearing, if, if the towns want to talk, believe me, they'll get in a room together now, and it absolutely, I mean, if they want to talk, talk.
And there's nothing that you can foresee that was going to make this premature so that we've got to come back and do this again for any reason?
Not that I see. No, ma'am. But it would be a good opportunity during the public hearing to air out those questions.
Yes, sir.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, members. Just to the point, I'm happy to discuss further, nobody wants to break in the last two minutes, but as to the point of the public hearing, if agreement is made tonight that allows this current agreement in the stands of rule for you all to move toward the public hearing, and an agreement is later had between Burkeville and Crew, you would have to hold, another, Crew would have to hold another public, we all have to hold another public hearing to address whatever that new agreement would, would be. So, agreeing to the decision tonight and moving it toward the public hearing would force either duplication of action, that they have to reconsider the boundary line adjustment and the new public hearing that you're holding apart, what would have to be done would be agreed on here. So, that's my point, is creating double, double the effort here if there were agreements, it would be a need to go back and do it all over again.
Okay. And, and to your point, I appreciate that, sir. My, my position on that, and this is just my position, board members, is I will gladly go to another public hearing if those two towns work something out. I have no problem with that. So.
Okay. The town requests that Nottoway County Board of Supervisors work with us on the boundary line adjustment and take action to direct your staff to prepare the necessary legal documents and to take all necessary steps to achieve it as soon as it is practically possible.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, board members. Can we get a second?
Did that motion reference the public hearing?
Oh, oh, wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for there. Okay, it's J, J3, Ms. Simmons. It's the bottom of the first page.
That's not it.
There's, there's the, there's the map, it's right there.
Yeah. Yeah, right there, this one here.
Okay, I don't have it on mine.
It is missing.
Yeah.
It is.
It's not on mine. I move that the legal staff prepare the necessary documents for consideration of boundary line adjustment for the town of Crew and their administrative staff and advertise the required public hearing on the matter being held July 20th, 2023.
All right, board members, you have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Board members, under, under the circumstances, there is a, a board member that is short here, and I am going to second this motion to go to a vote. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the motion, I move that legal staff prepare the necessary documents for consideration of a boundary line adjustment for town of Crew and that staff advertise the required public hearing. So, are these documents related strictly to the public hearing? Are you going ahead preparing documents related to the boundary line adjustment? I'm willing to vote to approve a public hearing, but nothing beyond that. If you're starting to prepare documents, what is this referencing?
You, you would be concerned that if there's, there's a change from, from what's.
What documents are being prepared in consideration of a boundary line adjustment?
You would have to, and I would defer to council on this, but I believe if you look at the proposal from Burkeville, you have, they've gone so far as to give you a boundary line adjustment agreement. So, that would be what would be in play.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, just to clarify, yeah, there would have to be an actual agreement. We have to work out, you know, the written agreement. They may have given us draft, but I haven't looked at it, and I don't know if you all have. We have the agreement, and then we want it to be subject to a public hearing and adopted by ordinance.
Okay, but just because we draft, just because you draft the documentations for a tentative agreement.
Correct.
That does not mean agreement.
It's not an agreement until it's approved and.
By ordinance.
By ordinance.
Okay.
And just for distinction, I was drawing your attention to the draft agreement that Burkeville has already presented. We don't have, we don't have, we do not have such a document from Crew.
Okay. All right. Was there, was there, well, Mr. Vaughn stepped out.
Vaughn stepped out for a moment.
Yeah. Public, sorry. As soon as Mr. Vaughn rejoins us, we'll, we'll continue this discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, while we're waiting, but Ms. Shekerton, was, was there any other clarification on that? Because, I mean, I, I follow what you're saying, that you don't want it to be presumed that there is an agreement.
Right. I just, the only other clarification, I'm fully in support, I've been in support of this boundary line adjustment for Crew.
Right.
And the, working with Blackstone and working with the state, it's just now that certain concerns and questions have been introduced, I feel like, number one, there needs to be representation from District One as part of this board, and I feel like these questions need, these things need to be resolved before we move forward with anything that, but it's, I don't, and I've kind of waffled on this at the last minute because I do fully support absolutely Blackstone providing the water, that Crew's back in conversations with the state is very encouraging, but I just felt like if we could allow some time to have some questions answered, it would, might behoove us all.
I'm going to withdraw my motion. Because the way it looks, it would die right now.
Okay.
So, I'm withdrawing, I'm withdrawing it because then we would have to do it all over again anyway.
All right. So, the, Ms. Simmons has withdrawn her motion, so at this point, we will move on to new business, which is the Burkeville Boundary Line Adjustment. Mr. Costin?
Related item was the request from the town of Burkeville for a boundary line adjustment. They've given, given you a depiction. My recommendation was that that be delayed for the town of Burkeville to reconsider and, and bring to the board a revision that excludes the area that's already served by the town of Crew. I, I would imagine that you're, you're looking to defer this action as well? I'm unclear what we've done with Crew. I, I was thinking that.
Well, we tabled Crew for thirty days.
Let me explain why.
Can we do that?
Because the way it's looking, we have two agreeing, two disagreeing. So, if we vote, formally vote here, it's going to die. So, the best thing to do is to not vote on it tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would suggest a motion to defer items J3 and J4 to your next meeting.
That's, yes, second.
All right, board members, we have a motion and a second to delay items J3 and 4. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion is passed. Next item, surplus property.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you'll recall during the LRA meeting, I presented to you this, the same issue. You've got a couple of pictures in the packet here that will show you in detail what we're talking about, old typewriters, three-inch floppy disks, five-inch floppy disks, computer monitors. All this material has been itemized, is available for surplus, for recycling. It's old, it's taking up space in the LRA property. Staff recommends that you declare the property surplus, and the reason it's on both agendas for those that weren't here earlier is because it's commingled. Some of the property is county, some of the property's LRA, and we don't know which is which.
Hang on.
Okay.
All right, that's standing out. Okay. All right, board members, you've heard Mr. Costin's comments here. There is a suggested motion here. If someone would like to go ahead and put that on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I move to declare the equipment presented surplus in direct county and LRA staff to dispose of it in an appropriate manner.
Can I get a second, please?
Second to that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed, it is surplus. We now have some room to pack something else into. All right, the consent agenda, consent items is in front of you. Is there any discussion on any of those items?
I move that we accept the.
I move that we accept the recommendations of the consent calendar.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any disapprove? Motion is passed, consent items have been accepted. Correspondents' item, the CRC made twenty-three items of interest. Is that you?
It's usually just on there if you all have any concerns or questions about those communication items.
Mr. Vaughn, was there anything that you wanted to add for the CRC? Okay. Sales tax receipts, any questions, Scott? Okay. All right, Mr. Costin, administrator's report, please.
All right. The, I think it's been reported that Ms. Presley and I met with the Nottoway County Electoral Board to review the results of the applicant's screening process, and then other than arranging the location for that board to meet earlier this week, we had no other involvement in that process. There was a video conference organized by myself with the Director of the Department of Criminal Justice Services and their staff, along with several of the regional county administrators and social services directors, to address the need of issues arising from the closing of Madeline's House. This was June eighth, Mr. Zodi and I attended a meeting at Fort Barfoot to support their efforts addressing concerns and issues surrounding the, for the, of the communities to further the governor's initiative. Mr. Rourke and I attended the meeting organized by the CRC to address the impacts of the Tyson withdrawal with Secretary Lor. The preliminary audit visit has been made and concluded. Robinson Farmer Cox Associates will return at the end of the month to conduct the turnover audit for the treasurer's office. As a follow-up to your board work session, I did share the solid waste phase one report with the, with all three towns in Davenport. The county's financial advisors, and of course, I've mentioned earlier, will be meeting on that issue, the larger CIP issue, the solid waste will be a portion of that. That meeting's next week. Now, one of the things that have been thrown into that mix is the courthouse complex concerns. As to, in response to Judge Tefe's letter, I did work my way through the state bureaucracy and have the state police scheduled for June 30 to do a security assessment. With the help of Mr. Hawkins, we have a lead on a ADA compliance official that can do an assessment for us. We've had our own staff look at it, and once we get all this information, certainly we'll be reporting it back to you. Now, I do want you to know, I met earlier this week with Judge Tefe to give him a status report on what we were doing. He was very appreciative. He was very, very complimentary of the judges' chambers that exist already. He said they're the nicest in the circuit. His biggest concerns are with the flow of people moving through the courts, and items that he was concerned about was how often someone in, inmate was having to move by witnesses, by perhaps witnesses against them, by the general public, the security. This place, the facilities here do not have a Sallyport, so a lot of his concerns had to do with security. And yes, there were concerns about some general appearance issues. Ms. Yates noted that earlier about some of the work that she brought to light, which before I got here, folks started working on cleaning those things up, but perhaps too little, too late. But we'll, we'll work through this. I've reached out to many sources to secure an interim finance director, and quite frankly, it's a, it's a difficult position to fill, particularly when you're trying to replace someone who's been here for better than 20 years. I will tell you that Ms. Tomer has been very, very helpful to all the staff, answering questions whenever she could break free to help us out. But we have had one offer, and to give you an idea of what that offer looked like, folks coming in would be charging us seventy, seventy dollars just to drive out here. Their hourly rate, depending on what we got, was somewhere between ninety and a hundred and fifty dollars. Okay. I just, I just can't go that. I don't think the board has the stomach for that either. We are trying to work with some of the more local temporary agencies to see if we can find some folks with some skill sets, and I don't see Heather out in the audience, but I'm paying every resource I can pay to try to get, get some additional help in here, just to carry us through the paperwork. I want to sing the praises of Ms. Presley, Ms. McCannon, Ms. Kelly. I left her off the list, I apologize, Ms. Tucker. They're all just stepping up and carrying an extra load. I think I've already let you all know that we have advertised, we, our ads did not run in the paper. That mistakes happen, but the papers have the ads for the next two weeks, but we do have them running on the website, VACO VML, so we're trying to fill some, some positions and of course, supporting whatever the board needs and filling the interim election District One supervisor. Be happy to take any other questions you all have at this time.
Do y'all have any questions, members? All right, we're gonna go to comments to the board. Ms. Simmons?
I'll just thank everyone for coming out tonight, and let me make myself clear. When I say my people, I mean the people that I serve in Nottoway County. I don't care if they're black, white, purple, green, striped, whatever, it doesn't matter to me. I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, Independent, it doesn't matter, I serve you. That's who I serve. So that's one of Ms. Yates' questions answered, is who, who are my people? My people are the people I've served, and I've served you for many, many, many years, and I will continue to serve you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Supervisor Vaughn?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, all right. Ms. Shekelton?
Nothing.
Okay. And I'm gonna shut up. Board members, can I have someone read the motion for close, for closed session, please?
I move that the Board of Supervisors of Nottoway County, Virginia adjourned into closed meeting pursuit to the Code of Virginia 2.2-371187 for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation and briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically regarding personnel matters and land use regulatory enforcement. 2.2-3711A1, assignment and performance of specific county employees specifically related to personnel matters not pending in county administration. And 2.2-371188, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding non-current litigation.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All right, it's been properly read, motioned, and seconded to go to closed session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are going into closed session. Citizens, officers, we'll be back just as soon as we can. Appreciate your patience.
All right, board members, what was that motion to? To be entered. Who wants to read that? If you don't mind. I'd like to reconvene in open session.
Okay. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom and Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this Board of Supervisors that such closed meetings were conducted in conformity with Virginia law.
Motion for open session.
Oh, I made the comment. I said we reconvene in an open session, but...
I move that we come back into open session.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're back in open session.
Okay. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors had convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this Board of Supervisors that such closed meetings were conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors hereby certify to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements in Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were here discussed or considered by the Board of Supervisors; and three, no action was taken in closed meeting regarding the items discussed.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Carson, could you roll call, please?
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vaughn, Supervisor Vaughn, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Sheckleton, do you so certify?
Yes.
Supervisor Simmons, do you so certify?
Yes.
Chairman Rourke, do you so certify?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have a four-o vote for certification.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carson. Board members, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by standing up.
Do it to me again, Arthur.
Y'all have a good night.